There's not a lot of people in the room I was last time. I feel safe. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, I don't think I. I'm trying. Well, this whole thing of where people are in like to have this chaos is all part of that. Oh, it's all part of that.
Thank you.
I'm a creature of a habit. I would have just gravitated right back where I'm always going.
Hey. How you doing?
Hi.
Yeah, there are.
Oh, well.
I'll check on that.
I could try to make more time today. Either way.
Oh, we're down here.
Can't have anybody as the best.
Did you see Mary Form? I keep turning it.
It's cold in here, yeah.
One minute.
I would like to call the October 19th School Board Work Session to order. The first item on the agenda is the Updated Public Comment section. We put one out yesterday after speaking with Dr. Brennan and a few comments that I'd received from outside. And that was 6F was changed to Florida law requires all citizens to conduct themselves in an orderly fashion at public meetings. Actions such as cheering, jeering, discriminatory, unreasonably loud, abusive or profane language or gestures are prohibited. Kind of narrowed what those prohibited items are, but yet said such as to open it for some things that might not be. And then separated the agenda items from the general comments. Didn't specifically say where they appear on the agenda. In case somebody wants to change that later, but if you like, we can specifically say that the general items are moved to the end of the. Or do you think we need to, we separated it?
I think we need to be as specific as we possibly can.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, because I know we've had a couple, so there's.
I'm sorry, Bridgette.
Two, two, there's 2.22A, and then we have 2.22 with the asterisk, which is our current policy, is my understanding, with red lines on it. And then you are discussing one that, there was another draft that was emailed yesterday.
The 222 asterisk is the current meeting that we have right now. And because we're, if we adopt, there are some changes that need to be made to it. And then 22A is more specific to the public comment that is referenced in 222. And yes, one, the one that came yesterday talks about that new 6F. And that was the only change in it. So you think that we need to specifically say where the general comment and the agenda items are? And where would you suggest we do that? Perhaps under E or a general comment, which is at the end or? No, that's. I've, oh, no, look under 6C. Persons wishing to speak agenda items will be called before any items are voted on by the board. Persons wishing to speak during general comments will be called after the board has voted on all agenda items. I thought we addressed that. Yeah, that's, that's 6C.
Is this the one that you gave out yesterday?
Yes, it's the one from yesterday.
I did not see it yesterday, so.
Well, the only thing different from yesterday is the language that I said on 6F.
Okay.
Florida law requires all citizens to conduct themselves in an orderly fashion at public meetings. Actions such as cheering, jeering, discriminatory, unreasonably loud, abusive or profane language or gestures are prohibited. There was two sentences there that got pulled together.
It was brought to my attention that the new one is in the packet that's on your table. So there's another packet that's on the table.
I didn't get a packet. This is what I got out of the packet. What, this one?
Is it in this?
No.
I don't know. We've had so many 222s.
No, I haven't.
Here's, here's something here.
Yeah, this is the, this is it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
So does anyone have any other comments? Bridgette?
On 6B, the most recent draft that was provided, hard copy here. That says persons will be recognized in the order in which the requests were received sorted by agenda item. So, and I'm just trying to be realistic to people coming in. What does that process look like? I mean, I know that there was a discussion of on the agenda, general open. And so if I read 6B, are you talking, is that suggesting that it's not really the order of received based on items on the agenda versus open comment? They're going to be sorted based on the order of the agenda?
What, well, normally there aren't a lot of different agenda items that they'll be talking about. We usually don't get that many that are talking specifically on agenda items. But if we have an agenda item that has to do with, let's say, that property down in, you know, next to the ball, ball field. There were people that were talking on that, and then there were people that were talking on something else. We would put the people talking about that property purchase here, and then we'll put the ones that we're talking about. You know, say a contract with somebody there, so that we kept them together. They wouldn't go back and forth. And that would either be done, you know, by Kathy or, you know, I would separate them, but that probably won't happen often. But so the agenda items, the people who come on the agenda items, you know, the number one, two, three, whatever order they come in, and then those who come in on the general items, the people who come in first for general will be the ones who will speak first.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would really like to see us simplify things and just take them in the order in which we receive them. We've had some issues with taking and writing numbers on out front. I think Kathy can organize that. But I think if you have two piles and take it in the order in which they come in right now. I mean, you might later on decide this is great, but I think that.
Well.
Enough to.
So then we have to hear them before we vote on the agenda, so then.
Oh, I mean, I'm okay with hearing those people that want to speak. But if five people come in and they want to speak on an agenda item, let's hear those people in the order in which they came in and signed a card.
Yes.
And then move everybody else to the other pile who is speaking on something that is not relevant to the board.
Yeah, so there'll be somebody that will separate the agenda and the general.
Right, but not anything other than that.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, I, I think if we had 15 people or 20 people want to speak on the same thing, that's when we get to the issue of, oh gee, maybe only five should speak on this, and you choose who the five. But we really don't have that kind of thing.
Yeah, we, yeah, that, that, that wouldn't, that would rarely, rarely ever come up. So, yeah, basically, we separate agenda and general and.
So you may want to change B, I'm sorry, 6B and strike the sorted by agenda item, just because I think.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You may, that's rare. You may want to strike sorted by agenda item under 6B, because I think that logistically, and whatever you're drafting here, we want it to be.
All right, so.
Precise.
So we just. We want to separate gender, agenda and general, though, but we will. All right, I'll just strike that.
Just in the order that people will be recognized in the order in which the requests were received, period. There will be two stacks. One would be agenda items and the other would be.
I'm, I'm getting a snot of the head from Kathy. She knows how we're going to change that when we vote on it today.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to reiterate that I'm opposed to the optics, but given of this new way of addressing public comment. But I do want to state that I consider the trend of parents that have come in over many years to discuss issues. They, they feel like they haven't been able to resolve any other way with students. That putting them to the end of the meeting, to me, sends a message I don't want to send. I think they, that anything that is happening with a student is the business of the board and is just as important as an agenda item, particularly when you look at the state of our achievement right now. And we look at the lower quartile of students, the lower quartile, 25% of our students are not making the kind of learning gains that we want. I would like to prioritize hearing from parents and particularly the parents of students with special needs that have been coming in on a regular basis. I don't like the message that sends, that they're less important than an agenda item.
Well, currently, when they come in right now, they are, they are mixed in and they have to wait. What we're trying to do by separating the agenda items and the general comment is when we're here, you know, till 8:30 at night. You know, staff can go home if we finish the agenda items. I mean, because remember, we are here to do the business of the board. If somebody has a problem with a student, they should take it up with that school administration. And if the school administration doesn't resolve it, they should take it up with the superintendent. Remember, we can't do anything at the board table to correct a problem a parent has. I mean, all they do is air the problem and we might send them some, you know, the superintendent might direct them with something. There is actually language in here that asks them to first go to the administration and then go to the superintendent. And that is where a problem with a student should go, because we shouldn't have to force a parent to come in here and air their problems with their, their child.
Well, I don't think we're forcing, and I respectfully, and I do mean respectfully disagree. The parents that are coming in here do not obviously know how to navigate the system. And not everyone is going to go in and read our verbatim policy by policy. I think it is the business of the board to hear them and as a last resort. They're coming in here as a last resort, not as a first or a second. And being school-based administrator and teacher for as long as I was, you would be surprised at how many folks in our community don't legitimately know how to navigate our system. And from my perspective, it is my job to listen to them. And whether we have staff here or we don't have staff here, the board assistant could take names and we could make it a point. I just, I don't like, I respectfully disagree with the optics of the importance of parents and particularly parents with special needs that have come here for years that aren't coming as a first, second, or third resort.
Well, most of the parents that are coming here are not coming because they have a problem with a child. Some parents are, but we at the board table cannot fix that problem, because remember, as board members, we set policy. And all we can do at the board table is, is look to the superintendent, who might call somebody and talk to them at the time. And, and that is not something that normally happens. We haven't had that happen more than a few times this year, that the superintendent had to send somebody outside to speak with a parent. A better way to handle that is for them to reach out to the superintendent and, and try to get that problem resolved. If they don't get it resolved, of course, they can come and talk. But what we're doing here is allowing staff to leave if they don't have to stay and listen to all of these. Now, what we're doing is saying, you know, how long does it take us to vote on, normally, to vote on the agenda items? It's, it's a small time that we take on that, because remember, we are here to do the business of the board. School board members oversee and we hire the superintendent to run the district.
I respectfully disagree. It is my job to listen to this community, and I feel I will continue to do so regardless of the policy change. I respectfully disagree. You can have your opinion, I have mine.
But, but on running the schools, we should take those things to the superintendent. We don't fix the individual problem, the superintendent does.
Not saying we do. That's not what I'm asking to go into the policy.
Okay, is any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. From my perspective, where, where I'm coming from is that everything should stay the same and that the amount of time that people have should stay the same. I like the idea of dividing agenda to general, because agenda, to me, means that we can conduct the business of the board. And then quite frankly, all of that behind us, the business of the board, why we're here, then we can sit intently and listen to, and, and I, I know that you're using a broad brush of parents who come in. I think every stakeholder that comes in is important, whether they're a parent or not. But I do listen for those parents who have children in our school district and are giving us a legitimate concern. And so what I'm really trying to do is just divide the way we hear those comments so that we can get the work done and then listen intently and cipher through the general comment. So I'm not minimizing their importance by putting it at the end. I want to make sure that the business is done and then I have my full attention to hear what they have to say. And I, again, not everybody that has been at the board meeting in the last months being disruptive were specifically parents. They are stakeholders and they are important, but I am really looking to hear from those parents that have children coming to the school district, so I just think it's a better way to organize it. One comment that I would add is that I don't think it's very clear, and I don't think it should be the chair's responsibility to have to decipher through those cards. I think our administrative assistant can be the person who gets them, maintain continuity. I know that, that we've had inconsistent kind of situations. If it's done by the board chair and, or the board administrative assistant, I think she can organize that and separate it in such a way and make sure everyone is heard. That, I think it's just a more organized, better way to listen to our, to our stakeholders.
Thank you.
I just want to say, you know, we want this to be a policy that's clear. I think it makes sense for us to break it into two sections, because I do believe that we need to look at what the business of the board is first. Everybody's doing this, Karen, because it, and let me finish, okay? I've got something to say. I know that you have been an administrator for 30 years. I get all that. But you haven't been sitting at the board table for that long either. And I just want to say that we've had our differences, and we, you and I may have differences from now on. That's, that's okay. But I have never not worked with parents who call me. I've never not participated with parents one-on-one to try to help alleviate situations, whether it's something that the superintendent gets involved in or another department gets involved in, at all times, at all times. I am talking to parents. I am attempting to solve problems. I don't need any, any special interaction with them at a board meeting. I really would prefer to, to hear them one-on-one on the telephone or in a private setting at a meeting. But I'm always talking to parents and always looking to help students. And I think all of us at this board table feel the same way. I know that the people that we have heard have been in two different categories. Those with children in our school district and those who are not with children in our school district and are really more of a political side. So I'm hoping that this will alleviate some of that and some of that dust-up that we've had this summer, that we've had in every school district in this state, in most school districts in the country. And I'm hoping that this will put some guardrails on what we are doing at the board table. And I really hope that we'll be able to do the business of the board and do it more quickly and that more parents will, will come to go to their school first, go to their administrative team first, do those things to help their student. And a school board member can always help with that as well, and I'm very happy to do that when it's applicable and when it's, when it's the thing to do.
And I'd like to respond since you brought up my name.
Karen, Karen, please wait until you're called on.
Well.
Please wait until you are called on. You will be able to answer when you get a chance. Ms. Ziegler? You're going to give up your time?
Brief. I, I think, I agree with what Mrs. Rose mentioned as far as, I think, I, again, historically before, we've, I think organized, in an organized fashion, having agenda items and open public comment. It's something I've said I would support for, for years. I think my concern is, when we've talked about redoing the public comment historically, almost always came as a result of somewhat critical comments from public comment. It wasn't more, it was almost as a response to that versus it being, let's have a more efficient meeting. And that goes pre-COVID before we had, I mean, that is, have been on the board for seven years. I've, I've seen that. And if you go back and watch it, it almost is always after. There's rankerous or impassioned comments that find themselves to be critical in nature. And then we find ourselves seeing like, how do we redo this? And so to me, that's the wrong way. It's almost responding in, in a way that I, I just think it signals the wrong thing. And that's where I've said before, I do, I think it is important as we go through this, it, that when a family or parent comes to the board, I agree, there is the ideal best practice of going through a chain of command and talking with your school-based administrator and working with a teacher or the school-based administrator and then getting the exact, I mean. But when a person comes here, I think what Mrs. Rose said, and I know I can attest to, it is very challenging to figure out how to navigate a school district. I mean, especially we have a large one, and we have great responsive people in our district. But when it gets to the point where they're here, especially when there's a consistent theme of issue, that is, that's where I think that's so important, that we respond to those, because it's elevated to that level. And I think that's currently happened particularly on special needs or ESE. But I also think it's important, again, if we're trying to, I, I understand that we want to focus and get to the business of the board. My concern is, the response of when we're doing it signals the wrong thing for building trust. I've said that before. I know that you guys understand where I'm coming from. You may not agree, but that, I don't need to, to be so redundant. But I do want to be thoughtful of stakeholders. You know, we have parents and you have stakeholders who fund our district. So please be cautious of saying it's only important for parents, which I'm always a big supporter of. But it, you know, does it, either way, all voices need to be heard, because they all support this district, whether their children go to our schools, whether or not they are taxpayers. And, and so I just, I always, when I hear, we try to separate people in buckets. That doesn't build any unity. It actually divides us further. So when we move to this aspect, again, I go to, I, I think this is the wrong time. I've, I've said historically that I believe it makes more sense by way of flow. But I am concerned that, and I'm glad that we struck the sorted by agenda item, because I just don't know that that would be very efficient, and I think that would just be a bit of a headache and that'd only aggravate people more if we don't do it per se right. And so I'm just, I'm, as much as I can say, I'm cautioning, because I just don't, I don't think this is the right time in response to try to simmer and make people feel that they're all together stakeholders. They're all equally important to be heard, and to me, that's the best way to, to build unity.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. When I made my comment, it was simply, Mrs. Goodwin, about the agenda, and I want to reinforce that. I didn't mention any board members' names to put anyone on offense defense. I was directing my comment without even mentioning an individual. You brought up me spending 30 years as administrator. That's incorrect. Half my career was as a teacher for students with special needs, so I wanted to correct that. You also justify making changes based on everyone else's doing it. From my perspective, and only speaking for myself, we aren't everyone else. We're Sarasota County. We're a top-notch district, and if I'm going to look at what someone's doing, I want to look at the districts that are achieving higher than us and why they are. I want my focus to be on achievement, not to try to match any district and any changes they're making with public comment. Thank you.
The board meetings are to do the business of the district. And, and yes, parents come to speak, stakeholders come to speak. Employees sometimes come to speak also. The, the main reason I was looking at for splitting these two was for our staff, so that if there are issues, because, you know, what, are we supposed to start having principals here? So in case somebody has a problem with so and such, such a school, they can go out and talk to the principal? As it is right now, we have our associate superintendents for academics, and then I believe we also have the high school and elementary ones here too. So there's somebody here to speak with them. I don't know that we need to keep the, our, our budgetary people here or, you know, everybody else here. I think if, if what they are doing is presented and they can, they can leave afterwards, you know, so that they can go home and spend dinner with their families or whatever. In addition, there was somebody here from a stakeholder that was coming here, it was a month or two ago, that was going to talk about the program with the internship program we were going to have. And, you know, this was an executive from that, that, that company ended up leaving, because she couldn't stay and listen to all of, and I'm sure she got an earful of, of all the discussions that was going on, you know, during general comment. I think we have to be, I think, recognize everyone's reasons to be here and respect for all of those views also. I mean, I think parents should come here and tell us generally what they think about our school district, what they think about a proposal that might be on the agenda, what they think might want to be changed. they think might want to be changed. But I think in a general way, if a parent is having a problem with a student, those things should probably be taken up with the school. If not, they should contact the superintendent or a board member. I mean, I've been contacted too and then we try to go through the superintendent to try to resolve that. I don't think it's good for a parent to have to come and tell the public the problem they have with their, with the child at the school. That might be a problem for them. And I hope, I hope that there's a rare exception, that that's not what happens on a regular basis. I think what we need on a regular basis is to hear from the people and what they want to hear about what's happening in our district or comments on what is on the agenda. That's why I'm bringing this forward now. We have to change our cards and that was something else that we looked at this. When our law enforcement and our attorney said that what you're saying is you have to clear the room or you have to do this or that, it doesn't, it doesn't jive what's on the cards versus what's on the, in your policy. So that was one thing we were asked by the attorney and our law enforcement to make sure that these things match, they jive up. So, you know, you see a problem and you fix it. Hopefully, you know, we could fix it before the problem happened, but we have a problem. We need to fix it. We're going to correct this. We're going to correct the cards and hopefully things will run a little smoother in our thing. So we're, this is going to be on the agenda. With the sorted by agenda item will be struck from 6B. And there's no other changes that anyone is asking for at this time. So we'll go on. And then, then 222, which also talks about board meetings, there's a few changes in that. Some of them are just what I would call scribners, that like the chairperson, somebody wanted it capitalized and as quickly as complying with notification procedures, they go aloud by law, you know, some of those things. But then also the language about wanting to speak is struck because it is then in And so these two would go together. Then we get into all of our other policy changes. Okay. Thank you. And if you have any questions on the policy changes, have you talked to the, okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Superintendent, I mean, Dr. Brennan, would you like to go through all of these?
Yeah, before we do that, if we could back up just a little bit.
Sure, go ahead.
On 2.22, well, prior to that, one thing I wanted to mention on what we just talked about with speakers, if I can, just from my point of view and then we can move on. First of all, I think that, I think all of us, all of us want this, all of us want the same thing. We're all, we want to run the business of the board. We also want to listen to all of our stakeholders. And I think, I think this doesn't come down to whether we want to listen to them or not. This comes down to when is the appropriate time so we can focus properly. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, when we have our meetings, we listen to all of our stakeholders whenever they speak. But is there a way to focus this by having speakers talk about agenda items so we're focused when we make that, those, when we vote? And then focus on the end of the meeting when everyone else can speak? I think sometimes by having everyone speak about anything they want at any time, sometimes it minimizes those who do step up and want to speak about an issue because they're in the midst of all these other issues that are being talked about that might be voted upon. And so then it gets lost. And so we don't want that either. So I think it is a good idea and my past experience has been one in which people have spoken about an item that has been voted upon and then separated for the rest. Everything that's being said by our stakeholders is very important and I would definitely not want to minimize that whatsoever. And I know nobody at this table would want to minimize that either. And we will handle issues. And like Ms. Rose said, yeah, not everyone maybe understands the protocol, what to do during the day and how to talk to, you know, your principal or make the call to the superintendent. And they will show up here and they will speak and we've seen that happen many times. And we need to make that a priority. When that person is up there and they're speaking about their child or what's happening in their school, we need to make that a priority. And we do call those folks and we do handle those situations. One way or another, we're going to listen, we're going to handle those situations whether it's at the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting or in the middle of the meeting. I think the big thing here is trying to place item, place speakers at the right time to maximize the business of the board and what we're trying to do as far as voting, but also be able to listen to and prioritize our stakeholders and take care of the problems that we have. And I think everybody up here agrees with that and we can work together and make sure that that happens. So, you know, my thought is and past experience is separating it out is not a bad thing. Maybe we need to do that and see how that works. And if it doesn't work, maybe come back later and do something differently. But right now, sometimes I do feel like folks getting up and talking about their issue, about their student does get lost amongst everything else that's being talked about at the same time. But that's just, that's just my thought. But at the end of the day, we're going to handle all the problems and we are going to fix whatever needs to be fixed. We're going to listen to everyone. We're going to call them. We're going to talk to them one-on-one and take care of the issues. And I hope no one would feel that we are minimizing them by having it maybe toward the end of the board meeting. That's just my thought, that's just my thought on that.
You know, I agree with that because I know too that, you know, people feel that they aren't heard when they come and they speak because we don't respond. And that was something else that I addressed in this in section two. It, as members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard before an agenda item is voted on and for general comments about the district. Public comment time during a meeting is a time for the public to be heard and is not intended to be an open discussion with board members so that they know it isn't a give and take. However, follow-up action may be taken in response to public comments. If you want a response from a board member, you should email them individually so that they have an understanding that we aren't going to have an open discussion with them during public comment because some people do get frustrated because we don't talk back. So I just think it more clearly defines what our public comment is.
So if I may, 2.2, if I can just say one thing about that.
Okay.
2.2, if you look at the paragraph number four toward the end where we've added, or the superintendent, that sentence has to do with something that is a little bit confusing. And it says, "Once the agenda has been published," which the sentence above it says, "seven days prior to the meeting date. Once the agenda has been published, changes shall be made only for good cause as determined by the chair, a majority of the school board, or the superintendent." And in our procedures, we have another document that has our procedures and there's a sentence there that says, "No changes are allowed after Friday before the upcoming board member meeting." And I just want to make sure that whatever we do here, we make it clear for all of us because I think we're all trying to do the right thing. Everybody is. And yet it's confusing because it says two different things. And so I know the policy 2.2, adding the superintendent allows, allows me to come in and say, okay, we're going to do this for just cause. My question is, do we want to have a time limit such as seven days prior? Do we want to shorten that, leave it seven days? That's my question. And then we'll need to change that in our procedures, whatever we decide.
Good point. I'm glad you brought that back up. One of the reasons why we don't like to change the agenda after it's been published is that, you know, those numbers are out there and for the public to be looking at. And if they're looking at and they want to come and speak to agenda item, you know, 22 and then somebody pulls agenda item 15, then now 22 becomes 21. So I think it's probably, probably ought to go back to saying, once the agenda is published, we shouldn't change anything in it. You know, at that time, what you have to do if you want to change something, it'd be done at the board table as what you do. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Right. So in this case, it does say the chair. So if it's within the seven days, you could pull it, move it, whatever needs to be done for good cause. We're adding myself or the superintendent there and then the majority of the board, which would happen at the table. You're right, at the table, an emotion would be made. And so the next question would be good cause and what would good cause mean? And I hate to get nitpicky, but I don't, always trying to do the right thing and I will call each of you and I'll get sometimes different answers and then I don't know what to do there because I'm trying to make sure we're all on the same page, doing the same thing. And so that gets a little wishy-washy and I just would like to be as specific as possible so that we can, we can do the right thing. That's all.
Yeah, and having items added to the agenda too because sometimes there's a reason why we have to add something to the agenda. Bridgette?
Thank you. So as it relates to the item number four on 2.22, as it pertains to agenda items, so September 7th workshop, we extensively discussed this for about 30 minutes, so much so I had the actual timestamp because what transpired this past week was I had asked for an item, a contract that was put on consent, be moved to new business for the reason of I don't want to support it. I didn't support it previously, so realistically wouldn't reasonably be something that would, should be on consent. And to move it as we followed the, and it was done the Friday, it was done on a Friday because that's when we had our one-on-one. And then was told that it was not allowed to be done even though we again have extensively discussed the practice of ideally not getting any gotchas, not making changes at the board table. So this allowed for a notice that something would be moved. And I go back and I'm looking at everyone's comments and so I just want to stop and clarify. So when it comes to a board agenda being printed, so I'm going to always be focused on it as trying to provide as much advance notice to the community as possible. When you have an agenda, you have consent and new business. That can be moved at any time, whether it be at the, well, whether it could be moved, whether it be by way of motion or we allow for the request because it is the superintendent's agenda and there's statute that substantiates that. So it is the superintendent's agenda and that would be up to him or her to make that determination of whether something could be re- removed, not removed, but replaced from one section of new business or, I'm sorry, consent to new business. And I want to make a very clear distinction between adding a new item versus an item that is already part of the agenda that was published after agenda review. Then we get it typically on that Thursday. It's a weekend, so I, you know, you'll meet with the superintendent, go through whatever, need to talk to staff ideally. And then if there's something that comes up, you, the goal is to, any changes, pulling for comment or pulling from new business or to new business. Historically have done it through our procedures, which I'm fine if we throw that out and put that in a policy. I've asked for that forever. So I would be happy to see this go away because it has caused a lot of consternation. But either way, I just want to make sure that we're clear because it seems to get convoluted and it doesn't need to be. But the public will still have these agenda items. It's not that they wouldn't be, you know, surprised if we have that right to move it from consent to new business. I mean, if you want to require it to do by way of motion, I would hope good governance would just allow your fellow board members to do that. I have been in a situation where it has been voted down and therefore you have to vote down the entire consent agenda. And again, that's just bad governance. You don't have to agree with why I'm voting it down, but preventing a board member from doing that is just bad governance. It makes us unproductive and we don't do any benefit to the district or the people we serve. So with that distinction, we do need clarity because I will tell you, I personally was very frustrated and I apologize to superintendent because you have better things to be dealing with and to me, it seems so minor, but for a roadblock to be put up just because, even though we had just discussed this in detail and everyone agreed that yes, we should allow that change to be made, I was told I wasn't able to make it. So I think that's a disservice. I know that there's a bunch of emails coming in, which I did not ask people to write about, but I will tell you that people are paying attention and I don't know that they know that it wasn't able to be moved, but I would, I just think that just sends, again, this is not a way we work in a positive direction. So whatever we change here, I'm in support of, but I want there to be clarity and it to be, again, consistently followed because it seemed as though all of a sudden something had changed even though that practice was something that we had followed for years. So as a board member, frustrates me, but I will move forward. I'm just going to close on one more thing. Then there are clarity as far as adding a new item to the agenda. The superintendent, again, pursuant to statute, can, it's his agenda. He could add something whenever he wants. Ideally, if it's not when it's published, he would put it on new business because it allows for, to be fair to the voting members, because it may not be something they want to put on consent because it didn't have an, you know, ample amount of time to review it. And these are just basic, good governance practices and it doesn't, to me, feel that complicated. But I feel like we've had this conversation multiple times over the last seven years. So I just would like it to be followed in a consistent manner.
Yeah, I know consistency is one of the things, as we should be, someone was saying, we should be consistent with what the policy says. So yeah, this is going to be discussed. Yes, Jane?
Well, I agree, Bridgette. I think that everything that's good in this policy that we need to discuss should be, and this procedure should be written into policy. I can remember times when there was a new item brought to the board table that was new business and that was a bit of a problem and a bit of a gotcha. That's different from what you're asking for today.
Two different buckets.
Two different things. So I think we need to spell these things out. Let's not make there, you know, be any problems. I'll be leaving the board next year and moving on and there will be new people coming on this board. And we want to make sure that everything is spelled out so we don't have any questions. And if we have the deadline of the Friday before, after agenda review and then only, you know, things could be added by the superintendent or the board chair preferably, that would be in emergency nature. And I'm sure that you're not looking to do that. And I would think if it was something really important, like adding, when we added the mask mandate to our last board, that we'd get a call about that so we'd all know that. Something of that important, an item. But I think that we need to spell these things out and get rid of this operating procedures, which really should be called bylaws and move forward and have everything spelled out very completely. So there is no question about it and there is no discussion of it. I think in terms of, you know, rethinking this, I understand your concern, Bridgette, and I have concern as well and I think we can work around it by making sure that we're very concise and complete in our procedure.
Yeah, and something else that isn't mentioned in here is agenda review also.
Yes.
And I think we probably need to look at that. So what I'd like to do is not vote on this today, but come back and I would like some input from you on how we might rewrite that. And maybe get your ideas into Kathy or the superintendent and we will come back and put this on the agenda for the next work session because, you know, you're right, it's complicated. And when I was told, well, you know, somebody is talking about this is what the policy says and I'm like, I remember we're saying, we need to be consistent with what our policy says. So I said, all right, for consistency purposes, but, and I know with that, I will be supporting your, I'm sure you'll have a motion at the table this afternoon as the way to have to pull that to new business, but there ought to be a way that we clarify how that is done. So we'll look at that, but we won't do it here. I think it needs to be thought out. Thank you. Starting with our list. I hope you all had a chance to go through these because a lot of them were small, but some of them were very meaningful, especially, you know, implementing the parents' bill of rights. Do you want to?
If I may, before we, and actually in the agenda, it says, it really says questions. So I, I didn't want to take a whole hour to go through all these. It really just says if you have questions about any of them. Now, I will tell you just as we get started here, these are the changes that came from NIFEC regarding the legislative changes that we have to our policies and some other changes too that they've placed in there. But those are, those are the ones that are in there. We did have many different staff members from different departments look at these policies and go through them. And so if you do have questions, I will probably be calling different people up here to answer them. Also, I'd ask if we did have any questions, if Mr. DeLeo would like to come up and sit in Tom Edwards' chair, for instance, just in case we have a question.
Well, he can sit right there.
Or sit in one of those chairs. That would be good as well. So that's where we are at this point in time. And the first, the first one there is the Family and School Partnership for Student Achievement. And I will tell you that we went And I will tell you that we went through that, Denise Cantalupa, if you want to come up. I don't want to go through every single one of them unless you have a question, but I did want her to come up, because she did add a few items to this that we thought were, the language was very good. And so if you had any questions there, she's here to answer them.
Yeah, I noticed that this was different than what Nefec sent us, and I think some of your language, and I think you were working with the PTA associations or something that, with some of these, so it really, I think, opened it up even more than what we were probably had to by law. But, you know, like welcoming all families into the school community and active participants, I really think this embodies a lot of what the Parents' Bill of Rights wanted to do. So go ahead, Deborah.
What we did, and Tara Conrady is with me, is Tara and her group, and Deb, Jacquelone, and I went through the whole document, and this first part was just outdated language. So when you see this added to the, like, for example, calling it the National Standards for Family-School Partnerships is updated language. So we just went through all that and updated it and added. Now, since some of these date back, we're not quite sure why this, these particular standards were chosen, but for this point in time, we really didn't do anything but update the language at this part. I will tell you that the version you have, that's probably highlighted in yellow, that's all from the new statute. So I went line by line, back and forth, to make sure that that was there.
That's the Parents' Rights.
Correct.
Yes. So that's, that is, within this policy, that is worked in. There was not a separate policy for that particular topic that came from Nefec. When I talked to them, there were a couple of policies in which they worked the Parents' Bill of Rights into those couple of policies. Now, I will tell you that I did have a separate Parent Bill of Rights policy written, and I have it with me, in case you wanted that to be a separate policy altogether. We could talk about that if you wish, or just know that it's mixed into this particular policy here.
Mm-hmm.
And Denise did a good job with that.
And I think at one time, we were talking about putting all the policies together as one on the agenda, but I think the one for the Family-School Partnership, we probably ought to put under new business, just so people, it stands out, people see what we're doing and how that is changing, because, you know, the Family Bill of Rights has been, or Parents' Bill of Rights, I'm sorry, has been, you know, in the news, a lot of people have been looking forward to it, and they want to make sure that we're following that. And I think, I think you, by this, you actually kicked it up a mark, so I truly appreciate what you've done here. And when I said just questions, I didn't realize how extensive some of these were. Some of them are brand-new language, and also, some of this was, talk about not doing our policies, some of these things were new policies in July of '20 that we didn't get changed, so shame on us. But apparently, we have been doing the things that have been asked for, we just haven't changed the policy for it.
The website, we voted on them.
Yeah.
It just internally hasn't been updated. So we've taken action on updated policies. Sorry, I wasn't recognized, but may I speak? So when we were receiving update, policy updates from Nefec, they were being brought to the board, and we were voting on them. What apparently, I believe, has transpired is that after we adopted them, it was not, the updated policies were not added to the website in our document of policies.
Well, I'm thinking like this Baker acted one, you know, the 5555, I don't remember voting on that, on the involuntary. We voted on that?
And Cessar, and the updated ones. I'll go back and pull it, but.
The notification involuntary examination. I think whether there were some we voted on that we didn't send to them, and that have to do with the.
That is true, if I could speak to that. There are some things that were changed here at our district that were not sent to Nefec, is what I found. There are others that have been changed but were not placed on the website, as Ms. Ziegler mentioned, and that, I think, has something to do with the, well, I know it does, the procedure and the process in which the policies were passed by you, the board, but I think with some of the personnel changes, and some of the changes that have happened in the last two years, did not make it onto the webpage. And so our, our, our school system and our staff have been following the policies, they just haven't been corrected on the webpage. And I noticed a lot of that over the weekend, this weekend, when I was looking through those, and we need to go through the website and make sure that we update everything that has been approved, and then the ones that you plan to approve here on this list in the very near future.
Yeah, and I know that we went through an exercise, was it three years ago or something, Bridget, when we all took a group of policies and we went through, and we made some little changes on there.
Because they all have them.
We're going to have to look at that, but I think what we need is a procedure for handling policies, and perhaps even a checklist. You know, we're going to draft this, it has to be approved by the department, it has to go to our attorney, it has to go to the board for advertisement, it has to be approved, and then it has to be updated on the, on the website. But I also think we ought to keep hard copies of them all, so I know we do have a book of policies up in the, in the board chair's, the board's offices, but I think we ought to keep that as a Bible, so to speak. Here is the hard copy, and when, because when somebody's fixing it on the web, you know, if there was a mistake, and somebody put it in the wrong place, or didn't delete something, you know, well, which one? So maybe if we, we even keep the old one for a few years, just to show this is how it went.
And I encourage us to go with Neola and get away from Nefec. They're not giving us all the updates, and I thought, I guess Art Hardy was Nefec. I guess maybe he had a relationship with them, because none of the rest of us really talked about Nefec, but.
That's, I know it's a whole nother topic that we can talk about, and I can talk about, but I understand.
But I really think we need to go and get a professional that does this well, and there are some issues I know with Nefec right now, with giving us some wrong information. All they did was they bought a law firm when they had someone that worked for them that retired, and so they're dealing with a local lawyer wherever they are in Tallahassee or something. But I really think the gold standard is Neola, and no, I don't work for Neola, but I do think they are who we need to be using in the future.
Well, two things. Ms. Brown, glad you brought up the procedures checklist and so on and so forth. I know Ms. Ziegler brought that up as well, and I talked to Kathy, she is, she is putting together a procedure for us, a checklist, so to speak, that we'll be able to share with our cabinet, with everyone else here in the district. So we'll be able to just follow that checklist and make sure everything is done properly. And then as far as Neola and Nefec, yes, you know, these, these items here, these policies here are the ones that were changed from Nefec. I'm not sure how many there were on there, but I remember, I think last board workshop, I mentioned there were 48 sitting on my desk, and those 48 from, after doing extensive research, those 48 actually were, there are 48 that were revised by Neola for different districts in the state. And then I have this one from Nefec that's not 48, and so then you wonder, are we covering them all or not covering them all? So, so you make a good point.
My point.
And, and I'm, I'm really, I'm still waiting for a quote. I called again today from Nefec to get a quote, and I hadn't received it yet, and they're still working on that to look at all of our policies. But, but as I dig deeply, you know, I wondered the, I wondered the same thing that you're wondering, you know, and Neola does seem to be the gold standard when it comes to that, and then it's just a matter, as Ms. Rose said before, how, how are we going to do that? What is, where is the time going to come from? And how much time do we have, and which staff members are going to do it? It is, it is an extensive task, and I agree with her on that, and so we're going to have to look at that closely. But I would, I would rather know that I, that we do have all of the policies covered, and that we're not leaving anything out, and Neola seems to be very good at that, especially given the fact that they have passed attorneys on board in Neola that helped them with that, like Tom Young. So that, that's the latest on that. So with that said, we're finished with the first policy. So if you have any other questions, I don't know if you have any other questions about any of the other ones, but if you do, our staff members are ready to come up and answer any questions that you might have.
They'll all just look alike. They will not have different type styles and so forth when they're completed. I would, would hope they, there's some different formats and that sort of thing in these, but.
I do have one question on the policy.
Be straightened out.
Yes, ma'am.
May I?
Yes, Bridget?
So I just want to, and Dr. Denise, sorry. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I know you were over here before, but, and I, just to be clear, the National Standards for Family-School Partnerships, and I apologize, I was reading and listening and you were talking, so just as far as where that came from, there's two questions I had for the evidence-based parent and family engagement strategies, and because we used to just have coordinate and integrate parental.
I'm sorry, Bridget, where are you at?
I'm sorry, 2.261, Section 1 and Section 2.
Okay.
Family and School Partnership for Student Achievement, the first policy we were discussing.
Well, as I said, it was updated language. When Tara, you want to speak to this, when you went back and you researched it?
Absolutely. In updating the language, the original standards are from the National Parent-Tutor Association. And so since the original policy was written, some of the vocabulary and language had simply been updated. For example, whenever the word involvement was referenced, we updated that to engagement.
Okay. So, and then, so it used to be, we used PTA standards, and now it's changing to National Standards for Family-School Partnerships?
It's from the National PTA, though. Same organization.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Certainly.
Yeah, that, I really think you pulled this. The, the one thing that I questioned, and that's 3C, will communicate parental choice and responsibility to parents, and develop procedures for parents to learn about parental and their rights and responsibilities, including C, exemptions from immunization requirements.
That's directly out of the Parents' Rights Bill.
I know it's directly out of that. What I'm concerned about, and, and Mr. DeLeo, you might want to look into that, I think there is some law that talks about what immunizations we must have, and how a parent can opt out of them. And I'm not sure if which law overrides which ones. I mean, so can they just opt out, and we don't have to ask for any explanation? Or is there going to be a procedure like there currently is about vaccinations?
So, as it relates to that issue, this policy is really just designed to talk about information that must be provided to parents as a result of the Parents' Bill of Rights. There is a Florida statute that relates to immunizations. It's specific about how one can opt out of immunizations. I haven't looked at that statute to see how it, if there is any conflict with this. I don't believe there is, but that's something I could certainly look at.
I think we, and I also believe that they're looking at that in the legislature this year. Somebody asked for a, a report on what immunizations are required, and how many, or something. Somewhere across my desk, I heard about that. But I think that is something that we need to follow up and make sure we have an answer on before the end of session, and we might want to check with our lobbyist on that also, because I do not want to run into the start of school next year with parents saying, I don't have to get an immunization, I don't have to get a doctor's, I don't have to. And so we need to make sure that, you know, if we have to have a written exemption or not, and who can do it, so that we have those forms in place before the start of the school year. Yes, Bridget?
The Parent Bill of Rights references the current existing statute that outlines medical and religious exemptions, so it would not have changed.
I'm sorry, what?
The Parents' Bill of Rights references the statute in the actual, in that statute, references and goes back to the statute, redresses immunizations of, as far as religious and medical exemptions, based on the State Department of Health's schedule. So, again, what was there before has not changed to today, so.
But, but what has changed, I believe, is what parents think they need to have as an exemption, and who could provide it and all of that. I would just want to make sure that we have that clarified before school starts.
Denise, one other question that I know on, oh, sorry, were you?
No, you're fine. I'll wait. Thank you.
Oh, no, I was going to a different policy.
I was too, so please.
Oh, you're, okay. On Policy 2.3, Denise, I know you worked on that one. On 6B, 6B, see where you crossed out, or through the use of telecommunications networks such as.
Correct.
Yeah, and I know Nefec had sent that to us, but you crossed that out because, based on information you had.
Yes, we contacted BSI, the Bureau of School Improvement, on that, and they, they told us that we weren't allowed to have members video conferencing. So I crossed that through. If there's anything different, we can also always take it out, but my understanding is that we're not supposed to, no.
Okay, so then, so when I look at 2.27, on 2.27, we have the same verbiage or language there.
The committees of the board are different than the, at school advisory councils.
So that's my question. Is it still that telecommunications part? Does that, that's different than the one that you just cited on 2.3, correct?
Yes, I did not check into this one.
Okay.
The 2.27 would be the Fair Boards and things like that, and we don't have.
Okay, I just want to.
But I still wonder why, that, it shouldn't, but, you know, when it, what you've left then is members of the advisory council may attend meetings in person.
We could cross that all out.
That, that means like they don't have to attend. I mean, why have that in there at all?
Yeah.
We can remove that.
We could just take the whole thing out.
You know, the regular meetings shall be had, the council shall determine the date, time, and place of the meetings.
That was revised also, because it didn't have to say that we had to have the exact agenda items there, the topics. So it, we revised it for more updated language.
Okay. Yeah, so I just don't think, you know, to say that they may attend, it's like, well, they shouldn't, may attend, they should attend.
Correct. We can take that out.
They should attend in person, but we don't have to say that at all.
We'll remove that.
So, you don't even have to scratch that out, you can just erase it, because it was all new, new language.
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Karen.
I wanted, Dr. Asplin brought up 2.27, and I had a question about it as well. Special committees may be appointed by the school board chairperson when deemed necessary. And the, you had mentioned the, the Fair Board, and I'm also included on the current list that we're operating from is Florida School Boards Association and Florida Consortium. And I'm wondering, given that, may I finish, please? Given that all members don't belong to that, that it's an optional professional organization, and also looking at the juvenile justice that I was appointed to, once I investigated it, and the, Dr. Asplin can update us, it isn't a board appointee, was my understanding, it's a superintendent-appointed position. So I think that as we look at 2.271, Roman numeral 1, that we may want to also, at some point, look at the list that that is, has been referencing in practice.
The, the difference between having a board that is set up by the school board, that then comes back to the school board with recommendations, those all have to be held in the sunshine. And, and the special committee of the board, I think that we have set up, that isn't on this list, is the, the oversight for the referendum dollars. These, the ones that are attached here are not committees that have been set up by the board. These are appointments to committees that the board sometimes makes, or board members serve on, whether or not we appoint them or not. But these are people, these are where we serve, and it, and it, it doesn't have anything to do with 227 per se, except that Kathy added that on so that we could be thinking of. that on, so that we could be thinking about that when we are looking at our new year, and who is going to be where. So, these aren't, these aren't committees that have been set up by the board, and probably shouldn't have been attached to this.
Okay, thank you.
It's just, you know, where board members are serving. Okay? So, I'm separating those two pieces of paper right now. You know, on 2261, we still have the conflict, and this is all written up, and there's nothing in how it was authored here, that discusses the conflict that you might have, and I think maybe some of it came up with even the mask mandate and stuff, when you have a conflict with the parents who may be from two different households, you know, pardon me?
Which Roman numeral?
This is 2261, the Parents' Bill of Rights.
Right, but which numeral, what's bullet?
I'm not speaking to anyone in particular. I'm talking about, because it might go to several. You give the parents the Bill of Rights, but, you know, do we put anything in here that talks about what happens if there is a conflict from one parent wanting one thing and another parent wanting another? Currently, we've been going by the registering parent or court order. Do we need to put something in the, in here about that, or? Yes, Bridgette?
I would prefer not to, again, because as we discussed before, I would argue that's a judicial discussion, and I don't want to put that on staff to be making those decisions. So, that's why the registering parent is, and I know you mentioned St. John's is something different, but in my mind, if it weren't to be that registering parent, who makes those decisions? A member of staff? And that puts us in a liability exposure. Those are domestic things that are, that are, happen. And the thing is, is that it has to go, if there is a dispute domestically of that nature, of where it's a divorced parent family, et cetera, then they have parenting plans. All of those things end up in a judicial format. Us having this, having something in here that's different than that, then my question would go, how are you going to execute that? Who's making those decisions?
Well, staff, I mean, because I'm being, concerning. These decisions have to be made right now, and I think what they'd like to be able to do is point to something that says, there it is.
And right now, it's registering parent.
But where is that at?
Yeah, we have that. It's in policy procedure. We have it.
Is it in a, is it in a procedure, or is it a policy?
I believe it's, I believe it's in the procedures.
Oh, well, then maybe we need to put it.
So, if it's in procedures, it probably needs to be in policy somewhere.
We'll find it.
So, it's something we're actually actively looking at now. There actually is language in the Parents' Bill of Rights that, that I think creates an issue here, which is why we started to look at it. So, we're working with staff and some stakeholders to try to come up with some answers. It's certainly true that the easiest, the safest way to do it for the folks on the ground who are implementing this policy is registering parent, and that's the main reason why most folks use that.
Or, or court order, I would think. Because like, if you've got a court order that says, you know, parent gets the child on Wednesdays and Fridays, that parent should be able to pick them up on Wednesdays and Fridays.
No question that would trump registering parent. But, but, so we're looking at something that we hope to bring to you folks, perhaps to look at in a workshop. We'll bring it to the superintendent, and hopefully that will cure the issue.
And, you know, we might want to check with our lobbyist up in Tallahassee, because, you know, I'm sure, well, you'd probably work with the Superintendent's Association too, on how, how this is, you know, working out. Do you have a question?
I want to thank Mr., thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Mr. DeLeo, because that's come up several times, school-based, of where registering parent, although I agree, it gives something for staff to put their hands on if we don't have a court order that would trump everything. But there's been a lot of dispute at school-based, where staff is getting pulled in, of where does that fit legally? So, I would be very interested in where registering parent fits in the law, as well as, I'm curious, I, now that Dr. Asplin said that they followed a different protocol, I'm curious what that is, and if you could just briefly share what that looked like.
Well, and, and as Ms. Ziegler said, in an attempt to not get involved in domestic disputes, in that particular county, you know, unless the principal had a court order that said a particular parent can't do something, they allowed either parent to do it. And if there's a problem there, then they need to take it up with each other, not with us. And so, that's where we left that.
Sticky, sticky wickets.
Both ways, I mean.
Yeah.
When I was going through 419, and I'm not sure if I mentioned this to you, Kathy, in 419, Section 1, it says, the stat, on line 3, it says, "And the staff of organization name." We got to put Sarasota County School District in there. And... Oh, I was looking at 5325, and that was about dating violence and abuse. And... I want to make sure, how do we teach our kids this? I mean, is there somewhere that we teach kids, you know, what these things are? And I think that there was another one in here about things on the internet. I mean, these kids need to know what they have to do. And another instance was that, in cases of an alleged perpetrator who's an adult against a teen victim, they must be reported to the abuse hotline. And I know they may have changed it, but when it's child-on-child, they were supposed to report to the abuse hotline, and then it goes to the state attorney's office, where they look at this sex abuse intervention network, if in fact, that's still going. So, I need to talk to Chief Enos about that at a later date. But that can all be adjusted later, but...
We do report child-on-child. We do report that, yes.
It's, it's not, in the, the policy is only, the policy only says, the new language only says if it's an adult on an alleged teen. And we might need to pull that and change that. This is 5325, the dating violence and abuse. So, let's pull that one to look at again.
Okay.
And the Baker Act, and student records that have to be defined, appointment and Reports of misconduct, I was looking at this as compared to the, and aren't we looking at the ones on abuse and harassment? And I don't think the reporting to the state on the misconduct is different than what we would have had to do then. I think just, this just requires us to then report to the state.
Which, which?
This is 6.29, and Allison, that's probably something you need to look at, and compare that to what we're doing in the, the new policies we had. And Kathy, did you say that there are some policies on the new, the bullying harassment that were pulled, that we're looking at? Yeah, this 629 might be pulled and looked at that at the same time.
Is there a certain Roman numeral and letter that you were looking at, too? Ms. Brown?
Which one are you referring to?
629. It, it just says that we have to report to the state, and...
Yeah, and that's consistent with, with a few of the policies that came through HR. Is that reporting responsibility? It's in a few of these places. And so, we've reviewed, right, Al, and feel like it's consistent with what we do and what we need to do. So, Al, if you have a comment?
Yeah, they added some additional things on, on how quickly you have to report it to the state, as well as adding, and we're not just reporting people with certificates anymore. We are reporting anybody that works for the district, including classified staff. And they also added that if those people were to leave during the investigation, we do now have to report them because of the allegation, if it's sexual in nature.
I think because of the importance of this one, I would like to pull this one out of the whole packet, and put it in those that we're going to be voting on separately, so that parents and, and employees know that this needs to be reported. I think it's, it rises to that level, that we should, we should pull this out of that, you know, because I think this is a little more than some of the other housekeeping ones we're doing.
So, that would pull to new businesses, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And Shirley, you know, the policies that we spent a fortune having done in Philadelphia, we need to look, Al, at how the intersectionality of those policies and any changes.
So, those were actually given to us in this packet. However, the NIFAC had the old policies. When they added to the old policy, they did not have the new ones. So, Kathy has resent them to them to update and ensure that we're in line with the language. So, they were pulled off here. But they actually did come to Dr. Asplin.
If there, if there are any changes, we'll bring those back. And so, just to make sure there was some confusion about which version we were working on, and Al worked, and Allison worked through all of that. So, I think we're in good shape now.
You know, there are several having to do with employment records, so. And then there was the electronic funds. And by adding 722, we are also going to be deleting 736. And it was a 738. And, and then that one, too, on B, 1B, it says, "The superintendent shall consult with the Department of Management Services." And that says, "Division of State Technology," reading regarding the district. I mean, I don't know that there's...
Looks like there's a place we're supposed to add.
I don't know if division needs to be in there, or taken out.
Let's see. Tracy, can you speak to that?
It's 1B on 722. The word division is in there, and...
Tracy will speak to that.
Does it come out? Something else go in?
So, on 1B, it was just strictly a name change. The agency used to be called State of Florida's Agency for State Technology, and now it is part of the Department of Management Services, and referred to as the Division of State Technology.
So, it's the Division of, and whatever that dark, and the CM one is in there, that can just sort of, it should say Department of Management Services, Division of State Technology regarding the districts?
Correct.
Okay, so that needs to be cleaned up a little bit. That's all. Okay. Is there any other questions? I think like, the prequalification of the contractors for educational facilities, we've done that. And then that we have to go through the e-Verify system was on some of that.
I have a question.
And, Bridgette?
So, I'm going to Policy 5.55, which is notification of involuntary examination.
Oh, the Baker Act one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, on this one, the one thing I just wanted to make sure is, the item number four, no, yes, I'm not very good at my Roman numerals today, four, that the superintendent shall develop procedures for notification of parents and/or reporting, if appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. The procedures shall be contained in the Health Services Manual. I just want to make sure we do that, if we don't already have that done. And then, I think, I always, as I said even earlier, the best interest, the best interest of is always this sticky challenging term, I'm sure you can attest to that, is because it's somewhat open to interpretation, and is a judicial term, I guess you'd say. So, if you go to item, I'm sorry, Roman numeral 2, it says, "The principal or designee may delay the notification to the parent for up to 24 hours if the delay is considered in the student's best interest, and if a report has been submitted to the central abuse hotline due to knowledge, et cetera." So, I just want to make sure if we have procedures, and that may be a Tim Enos.
Deb's going to answer that.
Oh, Deb, okay.
Deb and Tim, because I know, I know Tim really wants to come up here, right, Tim?
Well, he's got a lot of familiarity with the Baker Acting as well, from the law of the state, too.
I, I know from my time in Tallahassee, that if, if a child was suspected be abused by a parent, they wouldn't notify the parent until some actions were taken.
Right, no, so I'm, this is for...
Because they have to have the investigation first.
So, separately, for best interest, for the, for the Baker Acting, for involuntary examination. So, that's why I wanted to, you may already have them in your police procedures as far as, and that's why I want to make sure they were aligned to whatever ours are, if it defines, you know, how do you determine best interest of, for that 24-hour lag period? I'm just making sure, if it's in procedures, but I also want to make sure it lines up with whatever. It's a fun question, but there you go.
Hey, yeah. Okay, so we do, we do have everything in our Student Services Manual, so for your, the answer to your first question, if you ask, all of our procedures have been updated at the start of the year. We trained our staff. We trained Chief Enos staff. So, we feel like we're in a really good place with this. We do, we do discuss this at length at training, and the only time notification would be delayed if the student was in imminent danger by letting the parent know right away what happened. If there's any case like that, DCF is required to respond within four hours. So, the delay period is very short if it has to be delayed.
Okay.
And, and we also do have the, with the Baker Act, as well as that, we do have all of the other processes that we have in place, as well as the mobile response team through First Step, as well as all of the other things regarding to the Parental Bill of Rights have been added in. And again, training all of the SROs and regarding to that at the end, depending on if they're low, medium, high risk, what their suicidal ideation is. You know, we, unfortunately, we see a lot more younger and younger kids that are getting Baker acted. I think that's the stress of just the community, home stresses and everything else, COVID. I think that, that you can see that with the rise with school shootings in the country. Mental health is obviously is a huge priority. We have the new threat assessment tool that we bought as a district with Deb, that really specifically follows the Dewar-Cornell model out of University of Virginia. So, this is the state adopted. So, we really, really are making a huge focus on Baker Act and mental health in kids.
So, perfect. And so, you guys already have it defined in procedures, just want to make sure that, and then they all line up.
And due to the nature of importance of this, would you like this on, in the group, or would you like that separate voted on?
I'd be supporting it. So, I mean, that's up to anyone else. I just wanted to make sure that the procedure piece, it's where the fun, fun begins, so. And then, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks, that was easy.
Thanks, guys.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, I think we'll be voting on some of the other ones. It's just that, those that we wanted to highlight, so that people get to see them, rather than having to look through all of these. The Parents' Bill of Rights is going to be in there, and the one about notifying misconduct of employees.
Okay, anything else?
We're going to now, are there any questions? That, we're going to go review the calendar And, this is the calendar for the year 2022, and we start off with a major problem, because we're not here for the first two Mondays of January.
Well, we'll just cancel the meetings then.
Pardon me?
I said, we'll just cancel the meetings then.
Yeah, do we still even have to have board meetings?
I, I want to make a, an effort to change the way we meet in 2022.
Absolutely.
First of all, I would like both of our board meetings to be at 6 o'clock. I think it's easier for parents and people to get here. And it's consistent, or 5:30, or whatever anyone thinks, so that they come before they go home. I mean, I'm always, when I'm out, I'm like, okay, let me go wherever I have to go, and then I'm done. So, I would like both meetings to start at the same time, and one be the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday of the month. I would like to also, Karen, recommend that we have one workshop a month, and that would be on the second Tuesday of the month. And it would be a day if we needed, a half day if we needed, but only one workshop a month.
And we would do that, we would do that on the second Tuesday, not in conjunction with one of the meetings?
No, not have a workshop at the same time that we have a board meeting.
Any other comments on that, or?
That, that to me is tough. I think, I understand they can be long days, but I also think that, I think there's, so I'll start with the workshop and board meeting on the same day, because I, and I'd love to know from a staffing standpoint, because then we're talking about two board meetings and then a workshop. And I just think of the ebb and flow of the frequency of having to be in the board chambers versus doing their work. So, I don't know if there's any insight on that. I do think if we can get to one workshop, get it done, full day, knock out, so we're getting ahead of what we need to be done. And knowing that we have the strategic plan as a major focus, that's, I'm for the, as long as we can get our stuff done, I'm for one workshop a month, as long as we're not rushing through important stuff.
Or on a Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. I don't really care what day it's on. I just thought for consistency, they could all be on Tuesdays. But I think that'll, you know, I think it's a lot. And I have issues with like, today's meeting, because I have the Fair Board meeting that starts at 6 o'clock tonight. So, you know, it can, if we start earlier in the day, it can be a very...
Well, then, this is always going to conflict, because if the, if the Fair Board meeting is at 6 o'clock on the third Tuesday, and we change our board meeting to 6 o'clock... and we change our board meeting to 6 o'clock, we'll never be able to be on the Fair Board.
That is correct. Or we'll have to change the Fair Board or something. And I agree, that is a problem. But I still think 6 o'clock would be better to have both board meetings when parents and families can get here, we can have more students are involved in our board meetings, which is part that we always loved doing before, and we don't do that enough. We have plenty of students. We need to recognize, hey, that's why we're here, is for the kids and for the students. And I think that recognition is a big part of what we are and what they are. And that shows our community the wonderful things that we're doing, the programs that we're doing. So just a thought.
No, and I know we... And I don't know, you know, I don't, it's interesting because when we have, I think the initial thought was three and six because people have different schedules. Some have a traditional nine-to-five, and some others have, you know, there's just different working hours. And it was, I thought, at least, because that's where it was before I got on the board, and I thought the philosophy was that kind of accommodates both. But certainly we have meetings, especially with lots of focus on it. So when it's at 3 o'clock, people think it's intentional, but it isn't. It's just how we have done it. So, you know, I am curious if the 3 o'clock helps any, is it make it easier, or?
The 3 o'clock also... And Jane, you may be approaching this, too, that some people found that they didn't like going out at 6 o'clock because they don't see as well in the night when they get to be a certain age.
She always loves to hit me over the head with a baseball, doesn't she? Never fails.
No, but I know, I bought special glasses to reduce the glare for the evening. But that was one of the complaints they had about 3 o'clock. I don't care, I'll do it either way.
I don't care, we can do 6 and 3 if you want. But the workshop is really the thing that I'm most interested in is on doing the workshop on a separate day from board meetings so that we devote our time to that. And I don't care when it is, as long as it's a different day.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Karen.
Is there any thought to surveying or giving a window for feedback from our families? I agree with Mrs. Goodwin in that the majority of feedback that I've received in Mrs. Ziegler is that the 3 o'clock looks, is not positive optics, given recent events. The... But is, are we not getting feedback? Because it is convenient for some folks who work in the evening. Perhaps we need to look to our community before, with some type of window. Because I can't disagree with either, but I haven't heard anything about... I hear they prefer the 6, but that's a handful of folks that certainly doesn't represent our 40-some thousand families.
Well, and I know there's one family member that would say, "Wait a minute. Now you've got another Tuesday that we can't travel on." But, you know, we don't necessarily listen to them anyway.
Now I understand why you shoved that idea that I had last year down.
Madam Chair, if I could chime in, and I don't know how the staff is going, what the staff thinks.
Yeah, the staff is where I think we need to talk.
I haven't talked to them yet. But just from my thought here is that, you know, having them all at 6 helps because then everybody always knows when it is. And it's not, which one are we on now, which day is it, and all that kind of stuff. It's, you just always know that it's 6 o'clock. And then the other thing is, we've been talking a lot about having, you know, like our elementary choirs or our middle school band or jazz band or something, come in for the first 10, 15 minutes to kind of, you know, have something there. And then we start the board meeting after that, but they can't come at 3 o'clock.
Before every, every 6 o'clock meeting, we would do that. But I think it would be great if...
And then we can recognize more students that way as well, because they're...
I think getting back to recognizing students is a high priority to bringing our community back together as a whole. It's modeling a student focus, and it was well-liked by everyone.
I've already changed my dates to 6 o'clock on my sheet. So, you know, I think we need to go, if the superintendent wants 6, we go to...
I was just giving my opinion.
Well, I...
I don't, like I said, I don't know.
You heard from the staff, too. I was thinking maybe staff didn't want...
Peg, Peg wants 6.
They're gonna do whatever we want to do. So that's just who they are, so.
Well, I think 6 will work.
And what about the workshop?
You know, if... What's wrong with having a workshop from 10 to 4? And then a meeting at 6? God, we'd have to work eight hours on a day.
No, I just really prefer it on a different day. A Monday would be good, any day would be good. But I just think that it gives you a chance of prioritizing and just devoting your time to all these pieces of paper we end up with every time. And I just, I would just prefer it to be on a separate day.
And how does that impact staff and the focus on achievement and being in schools from your perspective, Dr. Asplin?
I think, you know, if we're in here for a whole day, no matter what day it is, we're not, you know, we're not out and about, you know, we're gonna, we are going to take that day to have a workshop regardless.
But we're doing that almost two days a month.
And we're doing that two days a month. You know, having them just stay and roll right into a board meeting, my guess is that they probably are okay with that because then it's just not another day to think about something else. The only other thing, and I think to your point, too, Jane, is whatever we do... Remember, we have, whenever we have a workshop and we want to place something on a board agenda, it gives us two board agendas to place on instead of just one because we're not going to place it on the one we have that day.
Right.
So that's something else to think about. But I think the staff's gonna do whatever, you know, they're gonna be okay either way. They're gonna have to do the same amount of work.
Yeah, I'd really like to see one workshop a month. And I think now that we've kind of settled in with new members, new superintendent, I think we've, we're back into a groove now. You don't have new?
Definitely. So is, so in the same day or not the same day? What do you think?
Not the same day, a workshop on a separate day.
You like driving down here that much?
I'm only gonna, just because I do think, I'm indifferent. At the end of the day, I've probably been more, what's gonna be more flexible to staff. I, by nature, was thinking, oh, God, that's another, that's another day. But that's not how I'm weighing it, in my opinion. I think, you know, it doesn't matter. I feel like I'm working from morning till night, nonstop, no matter what. So I, if it makes more sense logistically for getting items and really hashing them out thoroughly, because I, the one thing I don't like is when we're rushed and we don't achieve what we need. Because then we're just not being, it's not a good use of time. We're not optimizing anybody's time. That is the one thing that really I don't like. So if that's going to allow us to be more efficient and thorough, and we don't have a time-certain dead stop or hard stop, I mean, I could, I'd be fine, I appreciate, that's a very big pro in my, in one bucket. The only concern is from a staffing standpoint of adding one more day. I know they will do whatever it is, but I want to think of them for that purpose of what would also make their, you know, their work-life balance helpful, too.
Well, if the two board meetings...
Keep them. That's right, right? That's important.
That's right. If the two board meetings are at 6 o'clock, I mean, their day is gonna be the same as any other day if the board meetings are at 6.
Jody, why don't you make this decision? You want to come in and make? Well...
Let's go to like five days.
Five days? Oh, yeah, see.
And the staff can come in at noon on those days where we have board meetings, right?
Yeah. Well, we had three, we had three meetings with the same agenda items that were pushed, all three meetings. And they were, and they were important things, but we never got to.
Hash it all the way out.
So, you know, if we, and guess what? If we don't like it, if we move it to a separate day, we don't like it, it doesn't work for everyone, then we can move it back.
Yeah.
Right, Kathy?
You know, and whether we want to do it on the, on the second Tuesday of the month, that works with me.
That's just consistent, but do you have a preference of a day? You like Fridays.
Second Tuesday works.
I'm okay with that.
Third Wednesday.
Can I vote for Tom? He's not here.
Yeah, we'll run this by him again to see that, because he hasn't had input on that. But January, we do have to make a decision on January.
About November next month. I was thinking that it was gonna be one board workshop, or am I wrong?
Correct.
Well, let's hope so.
That's what I thought it was. And it would need to be the third one?
Yes.
And we would need to vote on that.
Because we need some time to put together what we need to put together for that workshop.
So we will not have a work session on the second?
Right.
Do we need to vote to amend that? Again, to me, that's an okay thing to do as a motion at the table. I don't know that we need to wait until the next, because we wouldn't, we would have to do it this time because that's the next meeting. And because it's published, we do have to make a formal, it was adopted with a formal action, so we have to remove it with a formal action. And I would be not, I'm not opposed to doing that tonight. And we allow for public comment on it because it's not on the agenda and move forward. And then we've tackled a task.
Okay.
And then, well, we should, we should, well, we only have one meeting in December. Now, are we meeting December 7th or the 14th? I've got 7th on my calendar. The 7th?
Is that a workshop and a board meeting?
Ooh.
I have a workshop and a board meeting on the 7th.
Yeah, we've got that on the 7th, and then we're not meeting until January... Well, the January 11th.
Gee, that'll give you plenty of time to travel.
Doesn't give anybody time to pull themselves together, so it would be...
We could meet that first...
January 18th. Pardon me?
Pull themselves together. You have a lot of time to travel. So we would have a meeting the 11th of January, is what you're saying?
Well, the 11th of January, 10th, the 10th is a...
First day back?
A professional day. So staff really isn't back then. So rather than meeting then the second, maybe we should just meet the third Tuesday in January. But there's a big space between the December 7th and January 18th meeting that you guys might have trouble with getting things signed.
Well, we typically always have a large break there, and we typically always have it, except this past two summers we haven't, but in July. And so we traditionally have been able to make sure contracts, necessary items, you know, housekeeping items are done in advance on that December meeting. So that, yeah, yes, okay.
Yep.
And then if that Tuesday on January, we want to move to a Thursday. So it allows for, we've done that in the past, where when we open up on a Monday.
So I'm looking at the first, or the only meeting in January will be January 18th at 6:00 PM. And when, and then I don't know when the workshop is gonna be.
Okay.
You guys think about that and let us know about the workshop.
It could be the 11th.
Well, again, that's what, will staff have been...
We'll get back on the 10th.
They get back on the 10th? No, they won't.
Oh, I thought, I thought the 10th was a professional day.
Professional day.
But you guys work?
Training people will, we have people...
We can figure that, we can figure...
So we'll have a workshop on the 11th?
It's a professional day.
Okay, so we'll be professional.
Okay.
So we'll be looking at, and we'll run that by Tom, that the second Tuesday of the month probably from 9 to 6 will be workshops.
So if I may clarify, I think that Monday, January 10th, January 10th, we, that they have a professional day, that's the day back. Oh, I see what you're saying. So either way, that's still fine for the 11th, because I was gonna suggest we'll just do the 13th for that week back so they can have their professional day and do their training, not prepping for a board workshop. I don't know if that makes more sense.
What day did you say was the board meeting in January?
The board meeting in January is the 18th.
Workshop is when?
We could, well, we normally do it on the same day.
Yeah.
But if we're...
But now we're doing it the week before. And do you want to do it on the Tuesday the week before, the day after? Or do you want to give them to the 13th?
I would say the 13th because that allows a little bit more time.
It's a Thursday, the 13th.
I don't know where my calendar is, but...
And a time to be decided. And on the 18th, the meeting will be at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Okay. All right, so then that takes us into February, then?
Well, so February, we're looking at the 1st and the 15th. These are the dates that are on here. March is the 1st and the...
22nd.
22nd, isn't that when?
That's after spring break.
Okay, the spring break is the 15th.
So wait, so back to February? And then we have the 1st and the 15th for the board meetings. And when's the workshop? The second Tuesday?
The 11th? Do I have it January?
February.
Should be the 8th.
The 8th would be the workshop. Okay. So the 15th is the board meeting, then we go into March.
So the workshop in February is...
8th.
And March is the 1st and the 22nd, and the workshop on the 15th.
Oh, you're right now, I'm in the mountains. That was my birthday present. Hold back on that a minute.
Oh, wait, we can't have it on the 15th. Well, the 8th, we can have it on the 8th, which is the second Tuesday anyway.
And we don't want to have it on the 8th, surely.
February...
It's the day of the referendum.
March 8th.
That's the day of the referendum.
It's the referendum. See, you've got to change things, and all these things happen. There's all these conflicts, so...
Several conflicts, but I'll...
All right, let's, we can do it on the 10th, the Thursday. What, do you want to do it on Thursday, the 10th?
Okay. Then the workshop is the 17th?
No, the workshop is the 10th. We are gone, it's for spring break, the 13th to the 19th.
So it's not the 10th, is it?
That's what they just...
March 10th.
Workshop.
March 10th is the workshop.
Okay, so what was the board meeting, March what?
The board meetings are March 1st and 22nd. It's on this piece of paper she handed you. You can have mine.
1st and 22nd, I got it. Okay, and the 10th is workshop. All right, I got it.
All right, then we go to April, and it's the 5th and the 19th, with the workshop being on the 12th.
Okay.
And then May, we are looking at the 3rd and the 17th, both at 6, with the workshop on the 10th. In June, we've got the 7th and the 21st, with the workshop on the 14th. And these are on the sheet, and that's where I'm getting all this information. In July, we've got a meeting on the 12th.
We only have one meeting in July.
One meeting in July on the 12th, which is the second Tuesday, which doesn't give us time for the workshop. So maybe we ought to have the workshop on the 12th and the meeting on the 19th? Is that agreeable? So we'll have the workshop on the 12th and the meeting on the 19th in July. And, boy, I'm glad I didn't put all these dates in my calendar.
Well, Kathy will send you an invitation.
And August, we've got the 2nd and the 16th, the workshop on the 9th.
This has nothing to do, I've said this, whether I'm running or not, doesn't play a role. But I would like to see us have almost a policy where we do not have a board meeting.
On Election Day, you're right.
Any election day.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So whether it be referendum or...
Okay, okay.
But I just...
What is Election Day?
I don't know, so I'm just saying.
It's August 2nd, it's August 2nd. So let's make it the, let's, you're right, I think that's, that's kind of tacky to do that. And it happens in, every year. So in August, let's move it to August 9th, the second Tuesday in August.
So just remember, the 10th is the first day of school, not that that has anything to do with anything.
Well, it does, and it has a lot to do with everything.
We're, we're gonna be out and about, running around at schools and making sure everything's good to go.
So can we do it on the 9th?
If that's a board meeting at 6 o'clock, you may.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do, I find Thursdays, I mean, just punt over to a Thursday.
Do you want to change it to Thursday the 4th?
Sure.
Okay.
Thursday the 4th.
So August will be Thursday the 4th?
Okay.
Okay.
Board meeting.
Board meeting. And the workshop on the 9th, there we go again, the day before.
Need to go like the 17th for the workshop.
Let's, let's go the next week for the workshop, what do you say?
16th for the workshop?
16. Well, it's the same day as the board meeting, is that okay?
Oh, that is? So like the 17th or 18th for the workshop? Oh, if it's a board meeting on the 16th, maybe, maybe the 18th would be...
Maybe the first week of school, we can do it all together.
That, that's a good point. I'm okay with that. That gives us more time to be out there.
8:16 for the workshop.
And board meeting.
And board meeting.
Is that right?
Exception to the rule.
16th, workshop and board meeting.
We'll have to make sure we do good notices since we're changing it. So I think people in the community have gotten used to the Tuesdays.
Unless we have the workshop on the 11th. Although, when, you know, when we do the workshop on the 11th, that's going to throw off our agenda review.
Still the first week of school, which is-
Yeah, it's not good on the first week of school.
Yeah, I say, I'm, I-
A lot of times, we're out till 6:00, making sure kids are getting-
And I would rather not have a workshop that week either.
Okay, so August is, we're meeting on the 4th. And we have to have the agenda review so many days before the next meeting. So we normally have it on the 11th. No, we would normally have it on the 4th for the 16th. And so if we're meeting on the 4th-
You're going to have a lot more agenda reviews now that you're doing a different day of the week for those workshops.
It's going, yeah, that, that's going to, it's going to throw off the agenda reviews, because we have to have the agenda review and get the agenda published. So we have to stop and look at those dates. The agenda review is on Thursday, but on August, we were going to be meeting on Thursday. We got to work out agenda review on the, in August.
Yeah, that, we can figure that out.
And September, we have the 6th of the 20th. And then we have the-
Yes. Yes.
Hmm.
13th.
Oh, I was just looking at, we've got the budget meeting on the 21st, we're meeting on the 19th. And maybe we could do that all together, but I guess not. We are looking at, what, September? So the 11th is the, in, in October. In November, the 1st is Election Day. Although, probably shouldn't avoid any of us, but, but 6:00 on Election Day is an issue regardless.
Anything to do with the board members, it's the members of the public to be able to vote, or our staff be able to vote. I mean, it, that's just-
But if there's more than two candidates-
No, I know, but that wasn't the driving force of the decision. It's just allowing people the opportunity to go vote versus having to pick, go to a board meeting, or so, just a-
Well, again, I think we run into the same problem on November 2nd. On November 1st, I mean, are we going to have a problem, you know, that staff needs to vote?
So we can go to the 3rd. We go to the 3rd, Thursday, the 3rd on that particular board meeting.
Okay. And then we have the reorg on the 15th.
Workshop on the 8th.
Yeah. And we might just have to do the review after, before the board meeting. You know, if the meeting is at 6:00, we can definitely do the, well, I won't be doing the agenda review. Jane will have to do two things in one day. I'd let you have my pickle. All right, so, yeah, I don't have to worry about agenda review, you do. So the first meeting in November will be the 3rd. But you're right, we should have that so people can vote and, and not have to worry about, are they going to-
We can draft a policy, so it's official in there.
And then November 15th, which I don't care about, I don't have to be here anymore. No, I, I do care about. I care very much, because I'll be, I'll be there with bells on just to make sure everybody does everything right. And December 6th is the board meeting. Do you want it the 6th, or do you want to move it later to the, like, December 13th? So that there's that, that gap. Because I thought we met the second week. Yeah, so I changed that December 13th with the, and then the new board can decide when they're going to have their workshop.
For purposes of advertising, though, just so we're not doing additional ones, why don't we just have the workshop and meeting on the 13th on one day during December? Because of the holidays, does that-
I agree with that.
Yeah. And I also thought that sometimes we didn't even have a workshop on those days. But, yeah, you're right. We'll make a decision for you and Karen and, and Tom. We won't be here, though. And board comments?
I have a couple. Are we going to redistrict?
We probably should. I know we didn't, yeah, we, we did it a few, I don't know, was it 10 years ago?
No, you did it a few years ago, if you remember.
2006.
I don't remember. No, you did it.
No. I don't remember.
About your move.
All right. So I would be happy to work on that committee, but I'd like to work with somebody with the supervisor's office.
That's a very, that's, that's, talk through that and then figuring out how you make-
Well, I think we need, well, I think we need to talk through that. And of course, the county commission is redrawing their boundaries. So I, I just think that it's a topic that we need to-
Yeah, I'm not opposed, it's been being on a committee and stuff like that.
That we need to have a discussion on for later, yes.
What we can do is get the information regarding what the-
Census.
The-
Census. Census information.
The census information is, and how the districts might be. Because I know when we did it before, we tried to even it out, but that was by registered voters, not necessarily by the census numbers. And so what we can do, because I, I didn't have census numbers, but what we can do is look at those and see how those are different. But I know that for purposes of the supervisor elections, you don't want to have, you know, a district for the state legislature, and then they're going to carve out another little corner, because it's the, the, the county commission, and then for the school board, you know, because some of them, you get into these little precinct things. So if we can try not to overlap those lines as best, best we can, it would probably work out. But the first thing is to get the census numbers and compare the districts.
And my other little short snippet is that we all need to have ethics training by the end of the year. And we can do that through the FADS website. And it really is easy to use. I really like it a lot. I've used Nefec and others in the past, but this is really great. But you got until December 31st to do that, so I just wanted to mention that.
Good. And FADS is the Florida Association of Districts School Superintendents.
It's an excellent one. I did do that one.
Any other comments? So we are adjourned, and we will be meeting up at the dais in half an hour.
I don't know. I'm, I'm just kind of off. I'm just kind of off today.